Good evening and welcome to the February 13th meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is made up of seven members. We have five here in the chambers and we have one remote this evening. Members are appointed by the City Council and each volunteer member volunteers their time and is a Bloomington resident. The Planning Commission is advisory to the City Council. For most items, the Planning Commission makes recommendations and the City Council has the final decision-making authority. We have one of those items this evening. There are certain applications that the Planning Commission can approve or deny on its own, subject to appeal to the City Council, and there are no items on our agenda for that this evening. For each item, there will be a staff report, then a chance for the applicant to speak, then a chance for any member of the public to provide testimony. After all testimony is given, then the Commission will close the public hearing and discuss the item before any action is taken. The first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able. All right, first item this evening does have a public hearing, as I mentioned earlier. It is for the Rainbow Play Systems Regiding and Rezoning at 900 West Eightieth Street. And Planner Caston Day, you have the staff report.
Good evening, Planning Commission. As mentioned, I'll just provide some highlights here on Planning Case 2025-2 for a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning. We'll see if the slides will advance. All right, so we're talking about the parcel at 900 West Eightieth Street, currently zoned I-3, which is general industry, and then guided industrial. This is just up here to give you some context in case you're not familiar with the site, but we're looking at near the intersection of Lyndale and American Boulevard. And across the street from this location is the REI complex and then the 700 American project from the HRA there. But this is just an aerial view, again, just to kind of give you an idea of existing conditions of the site that we can go back to if needed. And then just a street view picture from American Boulevard to give you an idea of the building. So it's a single level industrial building there. And so the request in it is a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning. So just wanted to start off why it's a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning. And I guess at the core of the issue is that the applicant is wanting to operate a use that's not currently permitted in the I-3 zoning district. And so we try to work with applicants and get compliance with the zoning code. And so there's kind of a number of options to do that. So you can either stop the use at the current location, relocate to a new location where that use is permitted, rezone to a zoning district that allows the use, or amend the zoning code to permit the use in the underlying zoning district. Kind of talking with the applicant, you know, they're interested in staying at the location that they're at. And through some discussions, kind of advise them more the rezoning route versus a privately initiated code amendment that would kind of involve a broader policy discussion about all of the parcels in the I-3 zoning districts. So this rezoning kind of just brings it in, talking about their specific case and their specific site. Some additional background on how we've got to this point. The Fire Prevention Division back in September had notified both the Environmental Health Division and Planning Division around some life safety concerns of an indoor play park kind of operating in their showroom. And looking at some of the history of the site, there was a conditional use permit issued here back in like 1998 that allowed for the showroom and retail sale of outdoor play equipment. And staff interpreted that the CUP was only valid for the retail sale of outdoor play equipment and not for private parties and play sessions, and interpret that as an indoor recreation and entertainment use, which is not currently allowed in I-3. So Fire Prevention and Environmental Health and the Planning Division have been working with the applicant again to get them into compliance. So they have done some improvements on the interior to be fire code compliant. The Environmental Health Team has issued some administrative citations for operating the use that's not allowed. And then that enforcement action has since been paused once we received this development application as a potential route to solve the issue. So that's just a little background here. This is the showroom plan that was provided by the applicant kind of shows you some of the different equipment that they have out. And this is the space that would be used for birthday parties or private play sessions. So they sell, you know, kind of outdoor, like slides and swing sets and those kinds of things that you typically see in a residential home in like their backyard or something. So they have a bunch of their models out in the showroom for people to kind of test out and play as a way to kind of sell their product. So just wanted to look at some of the comprehensive plan amendment considerations. I put the discretion triangle that I'm sure you've seen a number of times in the corner. For both the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning tonight, you are operating in a more legislative side of creating policy versus kind of applying policy to a site plan. And so in those cases, you do have more discretion in the decision that you have. And so there's not really set findings in code like there is for a site plan or a conditional use permit, and more just some general considerations to kind of think about to make in your decision. And so some of the things that staff just highlighted as we were thinking about their proposal. One, this property is identified in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan as a transitional industry area, which allows for a kind of on a case-by-case basis to look at regiding and rezoning. And it's not necessarily in that protected industrial area, and I can show the map in a second. As you'll see, particularly in the current zoning map for this area, there's a variety of uses in zoning districts around this property, as well as along the American Boulevard corridor. As things continue to redevelop, we just see a pretty wide mix of industrial, commercial, residential, and office uses along the Boulevard. Indoor recreation uses currently in our code are more aligned with a commercial zoning district and thus would need some kind of commercial guidance. We were proposing community commercial for this site as it doesn't have direct visibility off of 494 and this parcel isn't quite large enough to, on its own, meet more of those kind of big box or regional commercial uses that the regional commercial kind of calls for. And so that was kind of our reasoning behind community commercial. I have a slide on the Lyndale Ave suburban retrofit plan as well. But they, so there are indoor recreation uses allowed in the TI zoning district, but there's some specific language in our code that those are really meant for parcels that have direct access to Lyndale Ave. So this is certainly adjacent to and in the study area, but not, doesn't have direct access to Lyndale Ave. So it wasn't really a possibility there. So this is kind of why we're going to B-2 zoning district and then community commercial route. And then we have two strategies that were in the land use element that we highlighted there that we could kind of point to as well for support for the proposal. This was just the map that I mentioned that kind of shows those transitional industrial areas versus the kind of protected industrial areas. So those in blue can be, on a case-by-case basis, can consider regiding and rezoning. And so their parcel is in that blue area along American Boulevard. I think my mouse will show up. Yeah, I can just have it kind of highlighted in yellow there, zoomed in on the map. So it's kind of the comprehensive plan side, looking at the rezoning specifically. Some considerations. The, again, the CUP allows for a larger showroom than what would be allowed in I-3, as well as the retail sales. So both of those things are actually legally non-conforming in the I-3 zoning district. So rezoning it to B-2 or a commercial district would actually make it permitted and legally conforming uses, which would allow them more flexibility in the future if their business would continue to evolve. As was mentioned, identified as a transitional industry area. And then if you are supportive of the community commercial regiding, it would need a commercial zoning district to align with that, you know, it's best practice or we want to make sure that our underlying zoning aligns with the kind of regiding or future land use for the site. I did mention a little bit on the Lyndale Ave retrofit plan and maybe why we thought about B-2 zoning district instead of the B-4 zoning district. Again, the site was included in the kind of study area for the retrofit plan, but doesn't have direct access along Lyndale Ave. And really, the B-4 zoning district was kind of intended for the designated or priority nodes in the retrofit plan. So those are the areas kind of highlighted in red here. There's kind of the node around 86th Street and then the node around 98th Street. And that was really what was kind of envisioned in the plan, to be in that B-4 zoning district to allow more residential uses, kind of more, maybe kind of more urban design elements and walkability along those kind of priority nodes. And then kind of case-by-case basis rezoning elsewhere on the corridor. I also just wanted to note some items related to code compliance. So we wouldn't be able to condition a rezoning on its own. This isn't associated with a site plan or development. But just wanted to highlight and at least document kind of working through, working with the applicant and kind of looking at the history of the site. Currently, outdoor display or storage of merchandise is not allowed as a condition of that conditional use permit. And we have noticed that there has been outdoor display or storage of merchandise. And so it's something that would have to be resolved if this were to move forward and wanting to do that indoor recreation use. It also looks like the parking lot on the east side of the building has been kind of restripped from its original site plan. And for this use to meet the minimum off-street parking requirements, they would have to go back to that 90-degree parking that you see on the image here to meet those minimum requirements. So just wanted to highlight, those are things that we would also have to work through, but can't directly condition this rezoning on those, on that piece. So with that, we do have two recommendations here. The first one for that comprehensive plan amendment and the second for the rezoning. And then I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And then we also have the applicants here in attendance as well.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Cookden.
Thanks, ma'am chair. Mr. Caston Day, for the folks at home, can you explain the difference between zoning and guiding? I know the difference because I'm up here, but I think if you're a casual watcher, you might not understand the difference.
Yeah, Chair Commissioner Cookden. I guess how I think about it, the regiding is really the kind of future land use. So it's kind of us making some assumptions or kind of thinking about what we're envisioning for that site in the future. And so offering that land use designation kind of for future planning and future uses. And then the zoning or kind of the rezoning is really for what's on the ground today. It's the zoning district that's in the zoning code that has all of the different performance standards and things that folks have to comply to. So that's kind of the difference around kind of the current use versus kind of future use and planning for a site.
Thank you. I have a question about requirements in B-2. Since the property does not have direct access in, from American Boulevard, are there any requirements in B-2 say that the property would want to be redeveloped to have some sort of direct in or out on American Boulevard?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Planning Commission. I'm not recalling a specific performance standard in B-2 with access there. I don't know, Planning Manager Johnson, if you had. It looks like maybe you had a thought, but I'm not recalling anything specifically around the access to American Boulevard.
Planning Manager Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Albrecht. So the specific intent statement of the B-2 District, excuse me, doesn't have specific access requirements to Collector and Arterial Streets. I would note that the guide plan category of community commercial does specify some access requirements, and it says should be in proximity to Arterial and Collector Roads. It talks about some specific uses with respect to proximity to the highway, which this has as well, but that's more mostly driven by hotel uses. So no, the B-2 District does not have specific driveway requirements to that type of functional classification roadway. But the guide plan category does talk about access, but we believe this site meets those requirements.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, would the applicant like to speak on this item? Welcome. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, that would be great.
Hello, my name is John Meyer. Currently an Apple Valley resident, so obviously not directly in our hometown. But the business of Rainbow Midwest has been there for the last 26 years. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for working tonight. Greatly appreciate it because without this far, to be honest, we'd be going nowhere. I'd like to thank Dakota, who has spent many hours answering questions on our behalf. So truly, the business has operated in its existence since October of 1998. In that timeframe, we did receive a conditional use permit, which allowed at what we thought was for the indoor play at that point in time. It wasn't until September of this year that we did receive notice that unfortunately, due to zoning requirement, that we are in violation of that. So after 26 years of doing business the way that we have and have always intended to and would like to continue to do in business for the next 26 years, obviously, this is why the idea of rezoning and then reclassification has really permitted itself out there. To be honest with you, we've always complied with everything from the Fire Safety Commission to everything else as the business has been in operations since 98. We've only really had Bloomington as our home since we actually started as a business in 1991. So we've called this home since our inception and we plan to have it until we retire. With that being said, the idea of truly being a B-2 is really immaterial to us. We just want to continue to operate as we've always have intended to business. The idea of going from an I-3 to, our first application was a TI, just happened to be that we were 500 feet off of Lyndale, which is why we have obviously gone to community commercial. Once again, we really just want to comply with the City of Bloomington standards out there. We really have no really idea of reforming anything of our business. And the two requirements that we still have yet to complete will obviously be handled once weather is permitting, which is we do have one outdoor facility of a playground equipment that will be taken down, hopefully as soon as snow is all done melting the first week of March. And then to actually adhere to the 90-degree requirement of angling the parking lot correctly, once again, once snow has safely been removed from our facility. So to be honest, we really don't have much to add. I think Dakota did a fantastic job really explaining everything that we have. We just would like to continue to do business like we always have, and we're more than happy to comply with anything that would need be. Any questions at all?
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none.
Do we have any questions from the people online?
Any question, Commissioner Isa, any questions for the applicant? Or staff? Nope, okay, great.
Thank you so much.
If you wouldn't mind signing in as well, that would be great. All right. Now we will open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the chambers who wishes to testify, if you would come up, sign in, introduce yourself. Planning Manager Johnson, is there anyone online who wishes to testify?
Thank you, Chair Albrecht. There is no one online who is not either a Planning Commissioner or city staff.
Great. All right, we will give it a second in case anyone else wants to testify on this item. All right, seeing none, looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Because we do have one person remote, we are going to do a roll call vote. And Mr. Sherard, would you do the roll call vote for us, please?
Sure, Chair Albrecht.
Aye.
Commissioner Cookden?
Aye.
Commissioner McGovern?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Aye.
And Commissioner Isa?
Aye.
All right, that would be unanimous. We close the public hearing. Any discussion? Commissioner Cookden.
Thanks, ma'am chair. So we've seen a few of these over the years, and whether it's a good idea to rezone or reguide. And I wouldn't say it's always a slam dunk. You know, when you look at the guide plan, in my opinion, the guide plan in particular, some parcels to me are very intentionally guided something and others are grouped with a lot of other things. And so commonly, when you have like an intersection of two major streets, you might see some very specific zonings on those four corner lots or other things like that. Also, you look at, oh, on 494, there's some pretty intentional guiding and zoning. And in some of our development districts, there's some pretty intentional guiding and rezoning. This parcel here does not, I wouldn't include that in that category of, oh, this parcel was for sure meant to be that very intentionally. It's kind of grouped with other things that are already there. And it wasn't singled out as something that was really intended for something in the future. And so it sort of passes that criteria. And then the other criteria I look at in these things is, is there anything injurious to the surrounding parcels if we were to reguide or rezone that? I don't see that here. And so from my viewpoint here in the analysis, I've looked at, I think this is just fine of an idea and I'll be in support of it.
Commissioner White? No? Anyone else?
I will add my two cents as well. I think this is great. I'm glad that we can be supportive for the business to continue doing business in the City of Bloomington. We're always, we had been discussing a lot about where kids can go and how we can be a city that's welcoming to families. And I think this is very helpful for families. So appreciate that.
All right, looking for anyone to make a motion. Commissioner McGovern?
In Planning Case PL 2025-2, I move to recommend the City Council adopt a resolution approving a comprehensive plan amendment to reguide the property at 900 West Eightieth Street from industrial to community commercial.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Sherard, would you be willing to do the roll call?
Chair Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookden?
Aye.
Commissioner McGovern?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Aye.
Commissioner Isa? Got it.
All right, that motion passes. Looking for someone to make a motion for the second. Commissioner McGovern?
In Planning Case PL 2025-2, I move to recommend the City Council adopt an ordinance rezoning the property at 900 West Eightieth Street from I-3 general industry to B-2 general commercial.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner, Chair Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookden?
Aye.
Commissioner McGovern?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Aye.
Commissioner Isa?
Commissioner Isa, can you, sorry to jump in, can you vocalize your vote again one more time? We didn't pick that up. You might be muted. Aye, okay, thank you.
There we go. All right, excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. This item is slated for the City Council meeting agenda on March 17th as a public hearing. Thank you very much. All right, item two is actually a study item. And we are going to consider approval of the draft January 30th Planning Commission meeting synopsis. All commissioners were present except Commissioner Isa. So we will, looking for a motion to approve those minutes. So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call?
Chair Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookden?
Aye.
Commissioner McGovern?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Aye.
Commissioner Isa?
All right, great. Thank you very much. And finally, item three on our agenda is a study item. It is the Planning Commission Policy and Issues Update. Planning Manager Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Albrecht, and members, just to provide you a snapshot into the upcoming meetings. So right now, for the February 20th meeting, we have a study item planned. Planner Tom Ramler Olson will be delivering the second study session on the South Loop District Plan Update. So that's next Thursday. Currently, we don't have any items slotted for the March 6, 2025 meeting. We'll update you as to the status of that meeting once we know a certainty. And then for the, looking out to the March 20th meeting, we have two applications currently in the queue for that. One is an application that's been received from Enclave Companies for a seven-story, 275-unit mixed-use building with 5,500 square feet of commercial space. That's at 4100 West 78th Street and 3901 Minnesota Drive, just there at France and 494. And that would also include a rezoning in addition to the PDP or Preliminary Development Plan and Final Development Plan. And then the second item on the March 20th agenda currently planned would be a public hearing on the signed code one-year look-back amendments, which we recently had a study session on. So with that, that's the bulk of my updates and that's what is planned for the upcoming meetings.
Excellent, thank you. Any items for discussion from any of the commissioners? The only item that I have is a warm welcome to Planning Manager Johnson as his first meeting as our planning manager. We have seen him many a time. We have seen him many a time as a planner and we're happy to have you as leading the charge here for us, so welcome.
Yeah, thank you for those kind words, Chair Albrecht, and thanks to the public for having a reasonable meeting agenda on the first one, most importantly. But thank you.
Softball.
Yeah, thank you for the kind words. And as Glenn shared at his last meeting, all my interactions with Bloomington Planning Commission members have been delightful all the way through, so thank you.
Excellent. All right, seeing no other items, that will be the close of our February 13th, 2025, meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. Thank you. Have a great night.